Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission Meeting of June 26, 2023. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular scheduled meeting on July 5, 2023, at 10:30. And I try to tell everybody, 10:30 is an approximate time when they switch to the planning items. So, you know, it depends on how long those planning items go. So, it's not going to happen exactly at 10:30. First item is roll call. We've got everybody in attendance today. And everybody pick up their packets and reviewed the minutes of the June 12, 2023 meeting. If so, the Chair would address a motion.
I move approval of the June 12 minutes.
Is there a second? There a second flew by? All right. Very quiet seconds this morning, Mike. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the 2022 meeting discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Same notation. Have you picked up your packets and reviewed the agenda for today's meeting? If you have, the Chair would address a motion.
So, move.
Second.
Moved in second to approve today's agenda for the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting on June 26, 2023. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On to consent agenda, and we've got Brittany today doing it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item being removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1312 for Donald Johnson to review a single-wide mobile home in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends to end conditional use permit CU 1312 with the applicant's concurrence. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1814 for All American Sales Doug Bellinger to review a seasonal retail sales of Class C fireworks in a heavy industrial district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1814 with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU 2241 for Ames Construction, Patrick Farley as the agent, to review contractor's storage yard for the Wild Springs Solar Project in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 2241 with conditions. Item number six is Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment Review PU 1802 for Thomas Gog to review the sale of retail and wholesale seasonal fireworks, to review the future construction of a building up to 10,000 square feet for the storage and sales of fireworks, and to review the sale of used vehicles on the subject property in the plan unit development, and staff recommends approval of the extension of Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment PU 18-02 with conditions. And finally, item seven is Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment Review PU 20-04 for Thomas Gog to review the sale of retail and wholesale seasonal fireworks in a plan unit development, and staff recommends approval of the extension of Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment PU 20-04 with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Does the Commission have any clarity, call errors, and any of those to note at this time? All right. Does the Commission have any they desire to have polled at this time?
Six and seven.
All right. The audience, that'd be item six. Item seven, the staff. Is there any that you would like to have polled at this time? Anyone from the audience here to speak on any one of these that it is handled as one vote on a consent? We move and then we act on all, it would be in this case, I guess, three of them. We would act on three of them. Chair, take a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda items three, four, and five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve items three, four, and five of the consent agenda. Is there a discussion from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number six.
Six and seven together on this, Christine.
Do you have a question that relates to both?
Both.
Okay, go ahead.
According to this, the owner is Thomas Gog on the first one and Sgog Enterprises LLC. Does Sgog Enterprises LLC own the first one too, or are they separate?
Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner, he owns both of them. He does fireworks on one lot and Doug does them on the other lot. So, the conditional use permit is in Doug's name, but Tom owns the land.
Okay. That's why I was curious. Okay. That's all I have.
Are you satisfied on both six and seven? We do have to act on them individually, Mike.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept item agenda number six.
Second.
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation, Planned Unit Development Amendment Review PU 18-02. Is there a discussion from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, you can address item number seven.
Make a motion that we accept item number seven.
Second.
Moved in second to approve item number seven of today's agenda, Planned Unit Development Amendment Review PU 20-04. From the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Kelsey? Item number eight is a road naming.
Okay. All right. Item number eight is a road naming. Proposed road name of Panther Lane. The applicant is, what's his name? Randall Peregrin. The Randall Peregrin subdivided lot D into three lots, which forced the existing access for what was four lots to now accommodate six lots. Our requirements are anything that gives access to five or more lots needs to be named. So, this is his application to name this access road for six lots. Any questions? The road is in a 66-foot access and utility easement. He is currently building, or building this portion of the road. I don't know how wide it is currently, but I know the neighbor had called and said he was building that part of the road.
Questions for Kelsey? I have one. When they do these and you indicate signs are their responsibility, are those signs up to the new reflective quality that's required by the county?
Yes, they do need to meet the MUTCD standards, and normally, we request that they pay County Highway to install them so we know they're correct.
That was my next question. In other words, the installation requirements, which are actually federal, I believe, for signs alongside a road, then the easiest way to meet it is have them go back to the county.
Yes.
Because an individual doesn't know those specifications.
I mean, they can, technically, they can pay another company, but usually, I said, honestly, so we know that it's done right, I really wish you would pay County Highway to do it.
Okay. I don't know whether the Commission's aware of that. There is new reflective qualities and there's new installation requirements on these signs, and they actually, for an individual, could do them, probably end up a little expensive. Any other questions for Kelsey? Anyone here to speak on the road naming? Hearing no, none? Chair, take a motion.
Move to approve road naming to Panther Lane?
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation, proposed road naming Panther Lane with one condition. Discussion. From the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number nine, I think it is, yes. It's a road naming as well.
Well, my presentation doesn't seem to want to open. Oh, there it goes. Okay. Item number nine is a road naming for Fred Morris Road. The applicant and owner of all of the existing properties is Highway 79 LLC, Patrick Hall. This whole area is zoned commercial and heavy industrial area. They have plans to, I believe, just section of 40 acres, and this is going to be the access for the middle lots. And then, I believe, the section lines to the north and south will be the access to these other exterior lots for where they, where they own all this property. There is an existing road, kind of a track. This, I believe, the majority of this has been cleaned up since this is an older aerial map. And then, here is the, this was the most recent, October 2021 is this picture, but I did not get a chance to run down there, but we didn't have any issues from any of the routing comments. I believe 66-foot wide access easement that provides lots to five existing lots, and then, if they, once they do deed off those portions, I believe there would be six more or seven more, something like that, lots.
Questions for Kelsey? I have one. Just never get by me, do you, Kelsey? This is a private industrial development. There was some conversation and discussion at the time that this was approved of the road requirements and whatnot, and of course, naming is one of them. When this is done, will that naming automatically go forward when they develop the road to the other?
Yes, that is one of the things that we would require. The road would just keep going. If it keeps going and attaches to, over to Land Road, we would propose extending it all the way over, so it would just keep going.
To the next property owner's?
Yeah.
Property land?
If, if the road keeps going, yes.
All right. Just, I wondered whether that was, in other words, we won't be seeing a new road naming from here to finish it off?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for Kelsey? Anyone from the audience to speak on this item here? Chair, address a motion.
I move we approve road name Fred Morris Lane with, as recommended by staff, with one condition?
Second.
For it?
Second.
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation, proposed road naming Fred Morris Road with one condition. Discussion. From the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
All right. Item number 11 is conditional use permit CU 2321. Applicant owner Trinity Trust. The property owner is planning to remodel the existing residence. He is in the audience, if you have questions for him, and they want to live in the existing old wood shop and build, put a bathroom in so they can live there while they're remodeling the house. He is aware that he will have to do some upgrades to the septic. It is an old septic. We don't really have much information on it. So, this is located at 24148 Dedbrook Street, south of Hill City. It's a suburban residential district, and there are the pictures from the front.
Questions for Kelsey? Kevin?
Probably more towards the applicant.
Oh, all right. Is your applicant here?
Yes.
All right. I do have one for you. Are you going to be flexible and allow the applicant to use the existing septic for now with just the one bathroom?
He'll have to answer that. I'm not sure.
With your environmental people?
Putting the bathroom in and tying in, yes.
Okay.
I mean, yeah.
But there's some looking at helping the applicant complete his work?
Usually, if somebody puts a bathroom into a shop building, we don't make them increase the septic because you're either going to go in the house or in the barn or whatever.
I understand.
So, just if, in order to tie in, it just kind of depends on that whole situation.
So, you kind of needed an official review of what they have, at least walk through and, and then the environmental planner will issue their decision from there?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Go ahead.
Is that, did you go inside the shop?
No.
Looks like a little house already.
Yeah.
That's why I was wondering if it's already built for a house and it's been used for residents before?
No, no. It's just an old wood shop. The stairs go up to just storage space up in the attic.
Okay, so you were in there?
No. He's here, he can tell you about it. I did not go in that building.
Okay. And then, what happens? You said they were going to build a bathroom in there?
Mm-hmm.
So, what happens when it's done? Does it become an accessory dwelling? Is that what you're going to put under it?
No, because it won't have kitchen facilities and all of that. It'll just have a bathroom.
Okay. Thank you.
Kelsey, just for you, we actually do allow them to heat their garages and have a bathroom. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Under our normal permitting process?
Yep.
I've always understood that. Not all localities do that, but we do allow that.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come up? It would sound like there was a couple of questions here for you, and please introduce yourself just for the record, and if you have anything to say, just go right in and do it, and we'll question you after your remarks.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you for entertaining my request. The house?
I have to have you introduce yourself.
My name is Jeff Hoover.
Thank you.
And I'm the trustee of Trinity Trust. We're going to put dormers on the roof and do that in your place to stay, and so, we're going to use the shop for that. And we are planning on expanding the septic tank. It's my understanding that the contractors already spoke to, said we needed to get the permit to do that. But first, we needed to get this permit before we start the rest of the work. Are there any questions I could help you answer?
Mr. Chair? Go right in.
Where will you be preparing your meals?
Probably just go, but I remodeled my kitchen. We just wanted to taminate there. So, we want to, Alpine or other places.
There's no intention to put any kitchen utensils or items within the shop?
No, sir, no.
Yeah, that was my question.
Thank you, Deb.
I'm good. Kevin asked the questions.
Anyone else have any questions for Jeff? Well, we've got him up here. Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate it.
I appreciate it all. Thank you.
Chair, address a motion, and we can have discussion thereafter.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of CU 23-21.
Second.
Moved in second to approve CU 23-21 with 10 conditions. Discussion. Anyone from the audience want to involve themselves in discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 11.
Cody Sack of Urbanical Planner. Item 11 is Major Planning Development Amendment PU 23-07. Sue amended existing planning development to allow an additional recreational vehicle site on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is Black Elk Resort LLC, Daniel Roth. Location is at 12720 South Highway 16. Access is off South Highway 16, and there is special flood hazard area on the property 100-year. Staff is recommending to continue Major Planning Development Amendment PU 23-07 to the July 24, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant time to obtain an approved floodplain development permit for the new RV spot, and to submit a letter from the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources approving the change in use to the on-site wastewater treatment system.
Moved.
Second. Questions for, did, did we have a move?
Yeah. It's a continuance.
Moved in second to approve Major Planned Unit Development Amendment 23-07 per staff's recommendation. Discussion. Cody, I got one question. You knew I had it. This has been used already for the year before, and that isn't hanging me up. Is this, I see it in a wood, coincide with my memory. I remember it was very close to the floodplain on it, but is, is this RV site also sitting over the top of the field that's there for the septic?
So, it could be sitting over an old drain field. They redid two, they put two new septic systems in in the past, I believe, 10, 12 years, and both of them are in the front of the property by the road.
Okay.
The two systems that are, are used by the, the site for everything on there. So, I looked this morning. I don't have any records of one being there or currently being used for it. It's something we'll confirm for that July 24 meeting, though.
That's all I ask is that you do that. And the only reasons for the Commission's, I was, when they approved this, they've had a number of owners, but when they approved the RV sites, I believe there was a septic field put back there right under that site, and that's why it wasn't approved the first time. But it may also been the floodplain which you're working on, so I just was asked that they at least review that in their records. Anyone else have a question for Cody? All right. We have a motion on the table. Anybody on the, oops.
Mr. Chair, Alexa Muller, State Attorney's Office. I just want to clarify, the motion is to continue per staff's recommendation, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone from the audience that's here to speak on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Cody. On to item number 12.
Megan Talmadge, Planner. Agenda item number 12 is a conditional use permit CU 23-20 to allow a bed and breakfast. The applicants are David and Angela Rowland. The location is 635 Forest Street, just outside of Hill City. The lot size is 6.72 acres, and the current zoning is rural residential district. There is no special floodplain on the property. There are seven criteria that are considered when reviewing conditional use permit applications. They're listed on the screen. This item previously came up as a multifamily dwelling, CU 23-07. It was withdrawn, and the applicant made changes to the structure so that it would no longer qualify as a multifamily dwelling. He also changed a bedroom into an office area so that the septic system met the five-bedroom requirement, and the only two bedrooms that are being used for the bed and breakfast are the two above the garage in the structure.
All righty.
And staff recommends approval with 15 conditions.
Questions for Megan.
If you look at the list for the guests, "Welcome to the House on the Hill," it sounds more like a vacation home rental. Please wash dishes or load and start the dishwasher prior to leaving. It doesn't sound like bed and breakfast. So, I went online, an Air Bob, and it's beautiful inside, and I guess we, what, we pulled the stove, the range?
Please show.
This thing work? I mean, if you look at the kitchen, you've got a fridge, dishwasher, counters, and everything else. It doesn't look like a bed and breakfast, though it does say on here that the property's unavailable at the present time.
Yep. So, the bed and breakfast aspect comes in in that the owners are also using that as their main residence, and then they're renting out the bedrooms separately while they're currently living in the house.
But now, the, the two bedrooms are the ones up above the garage?
Yes.
Okay. So, well, I was just curious, just in looking at all this, boy, it sure didn't sound like a bed and breakfast to me, but if you've been out there, you know what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. That's all I've got, sir.
Other questions for Megan? Okay, just for the record, and so you know, too, we do have, we had submitted two emails, one from Hal Dean Johnson, for the record, that the Commission has reviewed. We all should have that. And the second one being from Doug Urit and Sonia Ballard. Did everyone on the Commission get these copies so it is part of the record? Thank you. Is your applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe they'd like to come up. If there's any questions, all you got to do is introduce yourself for the record, and if you have something to say, go ahead and say it, and then we'll ask you questions.
Yeah. David Rowland, thank you for considering a proposal.
Okay. What about what he was talking? In other words, you're going to be renting the two bedrooms that are not in the house?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, yes, so, part of the issue that we faced with the earlier conditional use permit was it qualified as a multifamily dwelling because it had a kitchen, it has an external access and a bathroom. And so, we, we just pulled the, the range unit, closed up that space so they wouldn't qualify that way, and then, now we're meeting the conditions for bed and breakfast, so.
So, you're going to serve them some sort of meal, limited however you'll have a meal?
So, yes, so we've been talking with the State Health Department about what those conditions need to be, and, and so, we're prepared to meet those.
Okay. Questions for David?
So, you're living in that lower part that cuts off?
Yes, the, the main part of the house, which is two-thirds of the square footage. One-third of the square footage of the total structure is above the garage, and that's the part that will.
And the extra bedroom you had you made into an office, is that upstairs or that's down?
No, that's in the main, that was in the main house.
So, the only thing's upstairs are the two bedrooms?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Other questions for David? Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Chair, address a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of CU 23-20.
Second.
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation, CU 23-20, and I'm just flipping, I don't know any conditions, 15 conditions. Discussion. From the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 13.
Give the PowerPoint a second.
Welcome back, Megan.
Thank you.
You're already here.
Megan Talmadge, Planner. Agenda item 13 is a telecommunications facility permit for a 195-foot self-supporting telecommunications tower with equipment, with an equipment shelter. The applicant is Amico Developments LLC. The landowner is Tom George Trust, and the lot size is 30.72 acres. The current land use is planned unit development, and the existing land use, or the current zoning is planned unit development. The existing land use is campground. There is 100-year floodplain and floodway on the property. The criteria for telecommunications permits are listed on the screen, and there were no major comments that were received on this item. I've gotten multiple calls and an email in support of this structure, and the applicant has already gone through the process to amend the planned unit development to allow for the telecommunications tower, and also for a variance for the tower to be closer to the property line than the 1.1 times the height of the tower. It will, this tower will also provide service in an area in which it is lacking. The tower will be beneficial to the public health, safety, and general welfare, and will assist emergency services.
Thank you, Megan. Questions for Megan?
I'm quite familiar with where this is. There's no lighting required on it, even though there's helicopters down the road. Is that?
I believe that that should be an FCC requirement for telecommunications towers.
Looked like there was no requirement, so that's.
Okay. The applicant is here. He's a lot more experienced with the tower.
Actually, the questions I have would probably be with. Actually, the questions I have would probably be with him.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael. I have one. Before we get to, we'll have you next, uh. When we review these, and this is my hangup, you know, I hate to see them any more visible than possible and I've actually stayed at where we're dealing with and it's certainly needed just even on the property because you can actually get some phone service on part of the property and you can't get it on others and then there's a sketchy area that on a particular weather day you'll get it and on, on that, another clear day you all get it. But do we look at sites, I know this site has, could have this tower back farther from the road and I hate to be doing these along these scenic drives all the time, putting these towers. You know how unhappy I was with our own county and the emergency people about that? And I see this as again, and they've submitted the correct photo. I compliment you for doing this in the first place. We actually had to get the other people to submit the photo visually and it is in our file, what it looks like when you're driving by, so that's my question. Do we ask them to show us the other sites?
So when it came to the variance, I did briefly talk to them about other sites and I said, you know, you could look into getting a floodplain development permit if you wanted to put it down further closer to highway sixteen, but honestly, that would increase visibility. Um, the exact reasons, I'm sure, could be explained by.
So that was the other site you reviewed at that time, so, and, and you recommended against it?
Um, it, I wouldn't say that we necessarily recommended anything, it was more of just a discussion on where else it could have been.
Understood.
Yeah.
I don't have any hangup on that, I think this, this communication out there is needed and it'll help other people. You can introduce yourself for the record and go on from there. Thank you.
My name's Leland Lakestrat. I'm with, uh, Anco Developments. Um, and in regards to the location of the tower, based on, um, RF studies on propagation and stuff, and then also to keep the tower height below the lighting, uh, requirements, it, it was, and, you know, it was pretty much the only area with enough elevation.
Backside was gonna get it way too high, wasn't it?
What's that?
Backside probably would've got it way too high on that property. That's where they used to put all the forty-five footers where it's up against that back slope and now you got an aviation thing.
Right, yeah. Well, and, um, just for, you know, out of respect of a campground, it's, it'd be preferred not to have a blinking light on it, hence.
Oh, shining back at the.
Hence for the one hundred ninety-five foot, uh, you know, height, so.
I don't mean to be salty, but I, we got a lot more tourists that are gonna look at it rather than the, the blinking light on the backside for those residents that are there.
Yeah, understood.
I just hate to see these things along these scenic byways, they get up higher. If anybody's driven by the one that I was so opposed to on the corner at three fourths, that thing is considerably higher and closer to the road than any of us ever considered. And they're just what, you're aware of that one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Certainly drive by it.
Right, yeah.
It's an eyesore, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I, I agree. Ours will be definitely more, um, uh.
Yeah, yours is backed up some.
Right, yeah.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate that, Leo. Any other questions for Leo?
Who owns the tower?
Uh, Anco Developments own the tower.
So you'll own it and maintain it?
Right, correct.
Okay, and, and then the, the contract is with the, the Georges on that, on the campground?
Yes, we have a land lease, uh, secured with, um, with the Tom George Trust, I think it's Tom George.
Yeah, Tom, yep.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing is this'll have cell phone and emergency services on it?
Right, correct, yeah.
Emergency service, are they county or do you know what they'll be?
It just depends on if they wanna sign a lease with us for it or not. Um, I know Pennington County has their own towers that cover that area. I don't know if they're looking for more service or not, but.
Okay. Leo, I'm gonna answer that a little, I don't think our emergency services would need it after the new ones we put in Hill City.
Correct.
Uh, and around there was, that was a six tower development, I believe, or five.
Right.
And that pretty much covers that area for emergency services, as I understood it, because.
That, there will be space available on the tower if needed, so.
Yeah, okay. No, that, that's all I had.
Any other questions for Leo? Thank you, Leo. I appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else here to speak on that? There isn't anyone else besides Leo out there, did you? All righty, thank you. Anything for Megan to add to that? All right.
Mr. Chair, move to approve TC twenty-three dash oh two?
Second. Moved in second to approve, uh, TC twenty-three dash oh two, per staff's recommendations with nine conditions. Discussion. From the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to item number fourteen.
Megan Talmadge Planner. Agenda item number fourteen is a, sorry, is a comprehensive plan amendment, CA twenty-three dash oh six, is to change the future land use from rural residential district to low-density residential district. Um, this item was last heard on the twelfth of June, um, and staff recommended to continue it at that time due to them not having filed with the city yet. And at this point, although they have filed, we've not seen the conditions and our recommendation would be based on the conditions. So staff recommends to continue this item to the July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Questions for Megan? In second. Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, to continue, item twenty-three dash oh six, per staff's recommendation. Discussion. From the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On to item number fifteen.
Agenda item number fifteen is the rezone to that comprehensive plan amendment. Um, it is the same property, the same point so, point seven four acres and staff also recommends to continue this item.
Okay, second. Moved in second, and I haven't even got up to fifteen yet. There we go. To, uh, continue, per staff's recommendation, RZ twenty-three dash oh nine. Discussion. From the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On to item number sixteen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll be abstaining my vote on this item as a county employee. I don't feel it's proper for me to vote on a county issue.
On the result?
This is a communications tower.
Oh, the new, the item sixteen. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Muller, again, Planning Director. Item sixteen is a telecommunications facility permit, TC twenty-three dash zero one, to allow a hundred and nine foot self-supporting public safety tower and equipment on the subject property. The applicant is the Pennington County Fire Department and the Highway Department. Uh, the agent is Ted Ruffel. The, the property is located at twenty-two, one seventy-two Creighton Road, uh, and this request is actually to replace an existing tower. Um, there is existing infrastructure on that water tank facility currently. Uh, they are, the rural water system is replacing that, uh, water facility and with that, they are not allowing, uh, the telecommunications, um, structure to be on top of it any longer, so the request is to, um, put this new structure basically to the south of the existing water tower. Um, they did receive a variance to the setbacks from the Board of Adjustment, um, to approach on the south and the west property lines. Um, with that, uh, staff is recommending approval with conditions, so if you have any questions.
All right. Questions for Brittany?
According to, uh, all the fine print, it appears that it can only be used for county?
It is a, the county highways radio tower, so it's to replace the existing.
So a cell phone, they couldn't tag anything off online?
It's just the radio communications tower. Uh, the nearest, um, structure is about one, a little over a mile away, so.
This must be similar to the one that you saw as put up in Hill City.
Yes, it's just a radio tower. This is similar to the one that's up on highway sixteen that's next to the fire station.
Yeah.
Uh, by Copper Oaks, it's similar to that.
Okay.
This is pointed information, the county maintains a radio system within their own vehicles and that's what this tower is about, rather than being, uh, emergency services type. It may or may not involve those, but these are for their vehicles, they're dump trucks, they're, they're cars, they're pickups. This is so they can stay in contact with them within the county. Anything else you're reading? Hearing none, the chair.
A move we approve, TC twenty-three dash zero one.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, TC twenty-three oh one with ten conditions. Uh, Commissioner, um, Kevin, our Kevin B. for the record, has abstained from, um, voting on this. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Let's see, I think we're on six, seventeen.
Yes, item seventeen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash ten to amend section one oh three definitions of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Um, the reasoning for this is to, for clarify, clarification of several definitions. The definitions that were changed or removed are all of the ones in the packet that are either highlighted or, um, crossed out. Um, so I don't know, Chair, what would be the best way to go through these if there's specific questions. Uh, staff worked through these, um, through our development review team, each staff member, um, went through these, we discussed them at length. And it's based on, you know, issues that we have or concerns or clarifications during our permitting processes of different requirements. So that's where the change in some of these definitions come from, so.
All right. Um, and, and your recommendation is to continue it, by the way?
Oh, it is actually, this one was advertised correctly, correct?
When?
Oh, it was with that one, too? Okay, I believe that the Pennington County current did not advertise for the correct date, so it is a continuance.
To the July tenth meeting for?
Correct. All of the ordinance amendments will have to be continued for the same reason. So.
Is there a motion to approve staff's recommendation?
So move?
That, moved in second to approve staff's recommendation to continue ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash oh nine to the July tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, under discussion. Take the moment, Commissioners, and read through there, it's well done.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it was needed and it was well done, so take the time to do that and I don't think you, it's, it's not gonna be a bulky thing when it finally gets, uh, there's some things that you're gonna scratch your head and question, but if you think through them or look around, you're going to notice that it's, the reasons for them are all right there. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash ten to amend section nine hundred road improvements and design standards of the Pennington County subdivision regulations. This was to update and add section nine hundred road improvements and design standards to clarify applicability of the road requirements within a road district. Um, so this is, has to be continued as well due to failure to notice, so to the July tenth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting.
Move to, or to continue OA twenty-three dash ten to the July tenth meeting.
Second. Moved in second to continue, per staff's recommendation, OA twenty-three dash ten to the July tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to nineteen.
Item nineteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash eleven to amend section five eleven fees of the Pennington County sub, Pennington County zoning ordinance. To update fee amounts for requests that require additional staff time, fees for several of these items have not been updated or increased in fifteen or more years. Again, staff is recommending to continue ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash eleven to the July tenth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting. Due to the advertising.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So move, second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, continuation of, uh, ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash one one to the July tenth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting. Discussion. I just got one question. It, it, having a fees one, it was always my, i- is that not true anymore? I didn't think fees were anything of the authority level of the planning commission. I thought that was a straight board of commissioners item.
No, it's part of our zoning ordinance in section five eleven, so it must go through the planning commission for recommendation.
But we're basically approving the wording and they decide the amount.
Or you can recommend different amounts.
Really?
Still a recommendation, just like it would be any other.
In the old days, that was not true.
Yeah, no, that's, it's.
I don't know whether you know that, in the old days, that was not true. The board of commissioners had a hundred percent control over the recommendation of fees.
Oh, well, it's section five eleven, so that's still part of our zoning ordinance that still goes through this body, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to item number twenty.
Item number twenty is ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash zero one to amend section three nineteen, the vacation home rental ordinance, um, section of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Uh, staff is recommending to continue this to the July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting. Uh, the committee did meet, uh, last week to discuss, uh, the proposal. Uh, they hadn't gotten through, um, all of that proposed ordinance, so they are meeting again on July sixth, um, from three to five, so hopefully they'll have those recommendations to bring forward by the twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Move to continue till July twenty-fourth.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second. Did you get which one, second? Yes.
Okay.
Per staff's recommendation and to coincide with our discussions on this ordinance, to, uh, continue ordinance amendment OA two-three dash oh one to the July twenty-fourth meeting. Discussion. Do we have any updates on how that last meeting went? I was going to, I sat in on the one, I, I thought I'd do the items under the membership. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item twenty-one is the county board report. Uh, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting, with the exception of the comprehensive plan amendment twenty-three dash zero five and rezone twenty-three dash zero eight for Pink Cabin LLC. Uh, these items were continued to the July fifth, twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioner meeting at the request of the applicant, so he could be present, so.
Thank you. Questions for Brittany on county board report? Items from the public, our public has vanished. Items from the staff. Items from the membership. Um, I have two and let's address the first one, the, the meeting went really well, I thought. Um, there was a little grumbling and wasting of the time of the members and I don't blame them. Uh, one in particular, but they put their cards on the table and that's a fair way to do it. Uh, they also noted that they thought they were spinning their wheels and that was the problem with sitting in the reviewing. The next thing, uh, that was questioned, and I did this for, uh, clari- clarity, uh, was we re, we did review every item by item. Yes, we put some together, uh, and we're not on camera, that sort of thing, but let's say we did A, B and C and we'd say, is there any thought or question on that? We don't have one. We're on to D, we do have question. And that's the way it was done and, uh, they're about, what, you think halfway through? A little over half, I would say. And, uh, then they're gonna sit and make a recommendation from there. Uh, that recommendation will certainly involve the, a motion that would move it back to this body. And then we're back in business and as you know, we're, we're down to two items of our review before we review the ordinance. One would be density, number two would be other items. Uh, so, uh, that's where we're at. Any questions on that? I think it's moving on fine. They did take a look at what was submitted in regards to, uh, what's in, short-term rentals. They did take a look at that and there was meant, there was a lot of enlightening information for some of the public that was there, what the vacation home rental and what the planning commission deals with in the way of legal requirements to do some of these things and whether there's wise to start putting them all under one roof or separating them, there was a lot of discussion on that. They did a good job. They've been doing a good job, that committee.
When do you think we'll get this?
To be honest, I think it'll come out of committee next time. We meet for two hours and then we stop at that, uh, that's kind of a rule I have about committees, 'cause when you get beyond two hours, people begin to get a little on edge and a little unhappy and they don't remember what they wanted to do and things get away from them. people begin to get a little on edge and a little unhappy, and they don't remember what they wanted to do, and things get away from them. So we, we do all agree to that. We're gonna call it quits at two hours. And at ten minutes before, I can make a quick fingers, if we're gonna have another meeting, what the agenda's gonna be. Good question.
What was the date of that again?
Sixth.
Sixth.
Sixth of July at three to five P.M. We do, they also agreed to that. We try and keep it what our members want, and they reviewed a lot of different times. They're at three to five. It's been the best for that committee. And we did have all but two of the members there. I believe five out of the seven were there at this one. And I expect that amount of attendance or more at the next one. I do not vote on this. I only guide them and direct them. Any other questions? Okay, and then the other item I had under this, and we'll get out of here, because I did a little research this morning, and, and staff's gonna help me. Well, we had, I, I had a, that I drive by every day. I have an actual health and safety issue. A, a particular trailer got run into by a car some ninety days ago. It's darn near now. And it's in a trailer court, and this thing is scary. It's so beat up and messed up. Anybody would condemn this thing and have it pulled off. And I, we're limited as to what we can do on this. But I would suggest you do the same in, in your areas. When you see things like this, they're doing the best they can. Our commissioner made a recommendation, if we run out of avenues, there is one at least that I can take. We need to get something, we're, we're responsible as citizens to protect these children that live places. And when you're talking about something that beat up kids, I would've been the first kid rummaging around in it and, and expecting to get arrested if they found me. If I got away with it, I got away with it. You know, I just, kids do that. And you can get hurt, and there's varmints, and there's critters in there. It's a mess. So I wanted you to know that, that I think all of us should always see those things. Don't quit just because there isn't a way to get it. We can't handle it. Commission, their office can't just condemn something, that sort of thing. But there's an avenues. We'll find it to help these kids out.
Would you speak to the owner of the court? Is that how they would?
No, I don't think, I don't think a person that's reporting it should. I think it should go through some proper authority somewhere. And in this case, the court does have a conditional use permit. So the planning commission may, the planning department may have some avenues at least to look at it. But it's been over, it's been around ninety days, and it's bad. They've moved out. There's nobody in it anymore. Just a tarp over the corner where it got run into. And I think we owe it to those people that live there. That's not right that we just look the other way. We're tough on things usually as a whole. Thank you, Commissioners, give us credit, and our planning commission are pretty tough on some people. Isn't? All righty. I have nothing else from items from the membership. Does anyone else have an item from the membership? Hearing none, the chair would listen to the motion to adjourn.
Chairman. Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank you all for your service for the Planning Commission. You guys do a wonderful job. Not very often do we disagree with you as Commissioners. And a happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Move to adjourn, somebody?
So move.
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn the Planning Commission meeting of June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. We're adjourned.
That before ten o'clock?
Thank you.